Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting. We're going to have our invocation from Dr. Wesley Green Senior, who is the Senior Pastor of Amazing Grace World Outreach Church of Forest Park. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with me.
Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners, I have to take one minute to thank God for our police and for EMS. My daughter-in-law was in an accident on Flint and Terry Boulevard where her car was hit broadside. It was all over the news and she would have died in that accident. The car caught on fire. Police officer busted the window out, broke his hand in several places to open up so she could get some air and pulled her out. And then EMS people came and used the jaws of life to get her out. She wouldn't be here today. So, you know, when everybody else is complaining about police and the great work that they do, I think we have some of the finest police here in Clayton County. And thank God for them. If it wasn't for their great work, she wouldn't be here, Monique Smith, who works in the DA's office under Tracy Lawson. So, let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. This is the day that you've made and we will rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for these awesome commissioners and our chairman. We ask you to bless them and, Lord, give them wisdom and knowledge. And, Lord, I pray that you bless every decision that they make. I pray that the Holy Spirit would lead and guide them and direct them, Lord, to make good decisions in government to bless the people here in Clayton County. Lord, I do pray for our police who put their life on the line every day and every night. I pray for our fire and EMS. I pray for our Sheriff's Department. Lord, I pray for every home. I ask you to bless every home and every business in this county to prosper. I pray for our school system. Lord, I thank you for having the busiest airport in the world here in Clayton County. I thank you for Clayton State College, Spivey Hall, Lake Spivey, Atlanta Beach, the Best Water Authority in the east and the south. I thank you for Arts Clayton. I thank you, Lord, that we live in a great county and we ask your blessings upon this county, north, south, east and west. Lord, we command businesses to come here, Father. Lord, not skipping over us going to Henry and Spalding and not going to Alpharetta, but, Lord, we're right here where the airport is and, Lord, no better place to be than right here close to the airport. So, Lord, we command businesses to come, new hotels, new restaurants, new condominiums. We call forth businesses all over this county. We call this county prosperous and blessed. We thank you, Lord, that we're on the comeback. Lord, you said that the first shall be last and the last shall be first. And so, Lord, I'm calling Clayton County first tonight and I thank you for doing it. I thank you, Lord, for our crime being low. I thank you for your angels being encamped around about this county. And, Lord, I'm thanking you, Lord, for blessing this county to be the head and not the tail. I ask your blessings on these commissioners. I ask you to bless them as only you're able to do. And I'm speaking blessing over Clayton County right now in the mighty name of Jesus. And all those in agreement, say amen.
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 And amen.
Amen.
Hallelujah.
Before we do the pledge, I would be honored if Mr. Stanley Byers would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. He is a World War II veteran. Let's give him a round of applause because he is a veteran. Next to Ramona. Next to Ramona. Right there. All right, sir.
Join me in the congregation. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
On behalf of Clayton County Board of Commissioners and citizens of Clayton County, we present you this flag for your honor and your faithful service.
Thank you. Thank you so much, sir, for leading us in the pledge and thank you for your service.
Good evening and welcome to the June 2nd, 2015 Regular Business Meeting. The Board will adopt this evening's agenda. Before doing so, does any member have any amendments to the agenda?
I do. Madam Clerk and Board, I'd like to add a proclamation honoring Mr. Ken Foster to tonight's agenda. Mr. Foster will be retiring tomorrow. Will be leaving the county and his service to the seniors of this county are worthy of him being recognized by this board.
I'll second it.
Prop of the move is a second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Madam Clerk, I also will ask for Resolution 2015-137 to adopt the fiscal budget year-end in June 30th, 2016 be held. We're still talking and exploring options in which to provide support to the hospital so without having a solution readily at hand, I would ask for this to be held until next meeting.
I'll second. I'll throw it in.
All right, Commissioner Rooks, second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Are there any further amendments? With the addition of the proclamation and the holding of Resolution Number 2015-137, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda with the noted changes.
Second.
Prop of the move is a second, those in favor, aye.
Mr. Chairman, before you call for the vote on that, I apologize, sir. There is a budget amendment as part of the Finance Department item that deals with the feasibility study from Deloitte. And our office has been working to provide the Board with an engagement letter with Deloitte. We have the agreement ready for the Board's review if the Board wants to consider that tonight, but I just wanted to point out that you have the budget amendment on the agenda, so...
It's already on there, so what you're saying is you need to add the document itself?
We would need to take it off if we're not going to do anything with the Deloitte study tonight.
But if you are inclined to do anything with the Deloitte study, you would need to add that to your agenda.
Can we not, in the event that we agree, just have that in the coffers?
We can do that. That's fine.
So, if we approve it tonight, it can't get paid unless there's a contract.
That is correct.
So, it won't matter, right?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Do we want to amend the agenda to add the engagement letter for consideration?
I've not seen it.
And we received it this evening, a finalized document, and we sent it as soon as we got the finalized agreement and I forwarded it on to the Board. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have about it.
Ms. Barnes, is it materially different than the one that you sent us on Friday?
The main differences are that we've removed many of the Southern Regional entities as the client, so it would be the county would be a co-client with Southern Regional Health Systems. We would be the only two clients with Deloitte. We have addressed Commissioner Hambrick's concerns about the $125,000 not-to-exceed amount for any deliverables, for hourly, their billing rates, out-of-pocket expenses, what have you, not to exceed $125,000. Let's see, what else has changed?
Commissioner Rooks, with those changes from the one that you received late last week, are you okay considering it?
I haven't seen it. I have to see it. I'm okay considering it if I get an opportunity. So, is it possible for, since you've gotten it, is it possible for us to consider it after executive session?
We don't have sex.
We don't have session?
I was planning to ask the Board for an executive session for a litigation matter.
I understand the pertinency in it. If you can slide it to me really quickly, I can read it and we can vote it up or down.
Commissioner Rooks, would you consider supporting an amendment to our...
To put it on the budget, to put it on the agenda?
At the end?
Yes.
Will this study be done before we approve the budget?
Deloitte estimates that it will take them approximately four weeks once they are engaged.
Because I'm trying to figure out how we pass a budget without knowing what the outcome will be of the study.
Commissioner Hambrick, Chairman and I were in that meeting. They expect to have four weeks to completion, but to have a preliminary feeling within two weeks about whether or not it's going to move forward or not, so we'll be able to make a decision based on whatever information they have halfway through, which I think is a big reason why we're postponing...
Right, and within two weeks, they'll provide us with some additional options.
I would like to see the report before voting on the budget because right now, the budget does not include the hospital.
That is correct.
That's what we're trying to do.
Right, okay.
The approval...
We're saying the same thing.
...of the study, within two weeks, we should have a better, clearer picture.
Krista just said four weeks.
In terms of, the whole study within four, two weeks to give us options.
Okay. As long as we have it before the budget is voted on.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can say this right, I'd like to move that we amend the motion on the floor for the adoption of the agenda as proposed to include the engagement letter from Deloitte and Southern Regional as the last item on our agenda after executive session for consideration.
I'd second that.
Prop of the move is a second. Any questions on it? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Now, we will have a motion to adopt the agenda with the changes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda with the noted changes.
Second.
Prop of the move is a second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
We have three sets of minutes for approval. That's the May 19, 2015 Regular Business Meeting minutes, the May 19, 2015 Public Hearing minutes, and the May 26, 2015 Special Call Meeting minutes. May we have a motion to adopt the minutes?
Is there a motion?
Second.
Second.
Prop of the move is a second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.
We would now have public comment. Mr. Chairman, we do have citizens signed up for public comment.
Set the minutes. Can we do all of them?
Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residence for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Harry Anderson.
Good evening, Mr. Jeffrey Turner, Chairman, Mr. Jeffrey Turner, Vice Chairwoman, Commissioner Ms. Gail Hambrick, Commissioner Mr. Michael Edmondson, Commissioner Ms. Shayna Rooks, and Commissioner Ms. Asana Gregory. I want to first thank you for the support of the Clayton County Police Department that you have given in your proposed budget and I want to thank Chief Ramona Bivins and Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Dennis Johnson, for giving clarity to the budget to understand it better. In your fiscal 2016 budget, you have for the County Police, $28,293,705, which would be an increase of $356,221. And Commissioner Rooks and Chairman Turner, in your three years, you're in your third year of your positions, you have increased the County Police budget by $3,423,812 for the County Police and their overall budget. In 2016, it's 28, it's $33,338,594, which is an increase of over $3 million. So, in other words, your three years, you have increased the budget and I want to thank you for that. I am going to say this because I'm going to bring issues about, you know, crime and gangs because as I've stated on previous past meetings and emails to the newspapers, which you enjoy great protection and great favor from the newspapers because they, as of yet, have done newspaper articles on factual information how Clayton County has a gang problem. The Clayton County Police have kept it in control, but the problem is still there. When there was a gang awareness seminar on Monday, March 30th, Channel 2 did a report on the increase of gangs in this county. Now, in the budget, I guess gang intelligence will probably be in the County Police budget or the Narcotics Unit budget because I have not met with anybody because, you know, Chief Porter runs his department very powerfully like you run your commission very powerfully, Chairman Turner. So, Commissioner Ms. Shayna Rooks, since I'm your constituent, what I'm asking is that, you know, I've given you credit and praise for the great work that you have done in supporting the police budget, but what I'm asking, Commissioner Rooks, is that you set a meeting where I can sit down with you and Chief Porter. That way, everything is, it can be discussed since that way I can get total knowledge and total information so that I'll know if monies have been allocated. That's probably the best thing to do where everybody is at the table. Like I said, I'm your constituent, Turner judge, Ms. Shayna Rooks, I hope you will grant me that request because this is very serious because I will be persistent, unwavering, unyielding and resolute on crime and gangs in this county because it is a problem and this will continue on past this meeting. So, I look forward to the meeting if you will grant me that request.
Let me say, if I, I don't mean to interrupt you, Dr. Anderson, I've not received a report from the Clayton County Police Department about gangs, have you guys? We have not gotten any information. So, I, of course, we want to keep crime down in the county, but we've not gotten anything. We, all I know is what you guys have told us was reported in the news. So, till someone has given us a report about what the crimes statistics are, the alleged gangs, I believe the sheriff reports that he didn't know about the gangs here in the county. So, if we can get a report, that'd be great.
That's why I wanted to ask for a meeting because everybody's at the table to discuss. That way, it's no confusion and...
I agree.
And thank you very much.
So, let me get that information and I'll get back with you.
Thank you very much.
And just for the record, but there is no set budget for gangs to decide. It's included within the budget as a whole in the Police Department and then it's an initiative that comes from Chief Porter to address that issue. So, it's operational issue that definitely comes from Chief Porter, not from this Board.
Thank you for your reply, Chairman Turner. Thank you very much for your time and your reply in this matter. Thank you.
Ms. Linda Ingram.
I'm sure you know why we are here tonight. First of all, we're here about the abused dog. I'm sure it's been on Facebook and everywhere. And it was brought into Animal Control later, Rescue got it, it was taken to Alpharetta where they took it to the hospital, but it was so eaten up with Magnus, a stray dog here in Clayton County. And here is what it looks like. Tonight, I saw Captain Jackson on TV and I did not hear anything about a reward. I do know Angels Among Us, the rescue that got the dog, is offering $1,000. Is Clayton County offering anything with donations? It would be bad if they didn't and Angels Among Us and other people did that. Okay, 50 dogs at least were euthanized at Animal Control Monday. Last week, as I understand, two hours before I came here, a statement came out on Facebook that of last week, they knew that these dogs were sick, yet over the weekend, we shared, did everything we could to get these dogs out. Monday morning, these 50 dogs were killed, saying they were sick, they were sick. Okay, my question would be, what lab was used and what, if the dogs were sick, then they didn't need to go to a regular vet. They needed to go to a vet like Georgia, Auburn, or somewhere. So, what lab was used and what did the lab work show, all right, for 50 dogs to be put down? What medical tests were performed to diagnose the sick dogs? What lab were the samples sent to? Who performed the test and what was the results? Were the results of the testing of the seriously ill dogs reported to the Georgia Agriculture Department, which is over Animal Controls? Okay, and why were reclaimed dogs allowed to leave the shelter with 50 dogs going down? They were not in return to the owners and were the owners notified of the potential arrest? Okay, on the report today, the statement that we got was medical personnel strongly recommended to kill these dogs. Who was, who is the medical personnel? Who are they? Are they professionals? Are they somebody that comes in there, the regular vet, and says, oh, these dogs are sick, they need to be put down? Well, if they don't need blood work and all of that, why wasn't the shelter closed? Why were dogs still being picked up by Animal Control and brought in to be with the sick dogs, yet more than 50 dogs were put down? Okay? Then I have this. Has any of the staff ever been in a class to do training with being around dogs that are scared, nervous?
Excuse me. Excuse me, I'm sorry, Ms. Ingram, your time limit has expired.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. I'm not putting you off either, but have you asked these questions of Chief Porter? Again, I can't stress that enough. Those are operational issues that Chief Porter has authority and purview.
Porter and I have talked and talked and talked. Sooner or later, Commissioners, we're going to have to come to you and get answers. We need answers from you all.
I hear you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Kimberly Kirby.
Captain Jackson said at the May 12th AC Board Meeting that no dogs were killed that week, yet on May 11th, 18 dogs were killed. In the same breath, he said the dogs killed were sick or aggressive. These dogs were not deemed sick or aggressive in the Available Pets album, only conveniently so on Kill Day. 10 days later, CCAC bragged two weeks of no kill on Facebook. Not recognizing the killing does not make it go away. We want the Clayton County Humane Society to pull more animals from our Animal Control. We're paying for their building and services. They need to be part of the solution, not just a burden to the taxpayers. Henry Humane can show them how. 55 dogs were killed yesterday. For you, 55 were filed. Each number represents a life. The number may be larger due to your lack of transparency by not putting owner surrenders in your albums on Kill Days and not having a Rainbow Bridge album. Blaming the slaughter on disease put $1,350 in Elizabeth Perry's pocket. She profits from killing our AC dogs and from being the sole vet for the Humane Society that rarely pulls our dogs. Please tell me how this is not a conflict of interest. We want to put a slip in every water bill telling people where they may find their lost animals. Remove the ignorance, be the solution. Yesterday, a mother dog of hours-old newborn pups was killed, and I quote, "due to her aggressive temperament." No pregnant dog was listed in the available album. Now, CCAC is begging through private emails for someone to come in and take these six pups to bottle raise. Why didn't they beg for a rescue for the mama and the pups? If you were a mother and a stranger was messing with your newborns, wouldn't you be aggressive? I can't even begin to imagine her fear as she was being dragged down the corridor on a catch pole to her death. You killed her for an instinct that God, our Maker, instilled in her. Anyone who knows anything about dogs would know how protective a mother is with newborn puppies. Only a monster would be so ignorant. We want a certified trainer to come in on a regular basis to work with the employees at Animal Control so as to prevent such horrendous tragedies like this from happening. Education is the key. Here for all involved. Trying to cover up killing this mama and 55 others because of disease at the last minute is unacceptable. One word, quarantine. The whole world is watching you and can see through your smokescreen. We want interest on SPOLOs funding for the new Animal Control to provide a free spay-neuter and low-cost vaccination program for Clayton residents. Imagine what six-plus years of interest on $4.1 million could pay for that would turn around the pet population problems here in Clayton County. After all, this money was designated for the care of the animals, not general funding. We demand that you actively earn the stripes you wear and become a part of the solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kim Ryan.
As you all know, Southern Regional provides essential and high-quality healthcare services to many Clayton County residents. In 2014, Southern Regional treated over 74,000 emergency room patients and delivered over 3,000 babies. Last year, with the passage of the SPOLOs, we were able to defees the bond debt, which provided helpful for Southern Regional and the county. We are enormously grateful for this action by Clayton County voters, which allowed us to eliminate $3 million in debt service payments annually and helped to retire the county's pledge to backstop that debt. Unfortunately, and despite continuing cuts in staffing and operational costs, Southern Regional continues to struggle financially for the following reasons. The cost of uncompensated care is a significant burden to the entire Clayton County community, but especially to the hospital. We are legally required to continue to treat a large number of patients who have no insurance. This trend is only escalating. In fiscal year 2014, the cost of uncompensated care to Southern Regional was $21 million. While uncompensated care is increasing, compensated care continues to decline. The hospital has other financial challenges, namely its lack of ongoing investment in its structures and facilities. In order to ensure the long-term viability of the hospital, there must also be an ongoing and funded plan to invest in renovations, replacement of certain equipment, and physical plant upgrades. This will also help drive up traffic of insured patients, which will lead to an increase in Southern Regional's revenues. Southern Regional's Board of Directors and management team are evaluating all options for the sustainability of the hospital. However, if indigent care funding is not identified quickly, Southern Regional cannot continue to provide its current services. Not only would a reduction of Southern Regional's services or a closure have a huge impact on healthcare and jobs in Clayton County, such measures would have negative effects on healthcare providers throughout Southern Metro Atlanta by placing a huge burden on nearby hospitals to absorb Southern Regional's patients. We realize these challenges may seem overwhelming, but with immediate and sufficient third-party support, both the Southern Regional Board and management believe the hospital can be saved. If we look at the communities around us, including Fulton, DeKalb, and Henry Counties, we can easily find examples of past or existing county and third-party support of hospitals by supplementing the cost of escalating uncompensated care and by providing funding for operational and capital improvements to drive more compensated care to those particular hospitals. There is still time to ensure that the hospital can be saved. Southern Regional's Board and managers are working together to communicate the importance of keeping Southern Regional open for our patients, our physicians, our employees, and most importantly, for the sake of the Clayton County community.
Excuse me, Ms. Ryan.
We ask for your support.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Fleming.
I'm Lisa Fleming, Fayette County, owner of Courtney's K9 Care. We've spoke about the animal control situation and then we're talking about the disease that just was the reason for killing 50-plus animals on Monday. I've been dealing with Clayton County boarding, doing quarantine boarding for their dogs for three-plus years now and I've probably touched 1350 at least. I think that's the number we're on now, 1350. I can tell you with 100% certainty backed up by veterinarians that mainly what they see out of this shelter is parvovirus, bordetella, E. coli in one of the particular lungs of one of the puppies, and a bacteria called microplasma. All of these are common because once you're in a situation and once you see this and you're in the veterinarian offices, you know you're seeing the same things over. Once you've sent four or five to Tifton UGA Lab, you get the same results back. It's the same things. It's not a new virus. It's not a new bacteria. It's the same thing. When the staffed vet comes in, and I know we've been saying the same things over and over, they will make sure that the whole cleaning protocol changes. And when it does, you'll see a red... And when it does, you'll see a reduced incident with these type of bacterias and viruses. This is not new. You know, I was appalled to hear that the people of Animal Control have become behavioralist. I've seen at least ten pregnant mothers in my boarding facility. They give birth there, and unfortunately, because there's no other place to go, we wean and we actually transport the puppies out at the appropriate age of transport. And I can tell you, most mothers, when you approach their offspring, are aggressive temporarily, which will go away after the offspring goes through a weaning process. They had no right to drag that mother down that corridor and euthanize her, leaving six babies without a mother. I even offered to take those sex because I have a mother that has milk right now to help out, and I think they already went into a veterinarian situation. That, that just, it makes good chills down my spine. But they would kill a mother with her six. These newborns were two days old, two or three days old. How barbaric. Clayton County, come on. Is this, is this what we bring ourselves to? There is not many shelters, Gwinnett Spaulding, that will do this. They will not do this. They will plead, beg for a rescue. Come get mom, come get babies. And yes, mom is acting aggressively. Put your plea out and we will come. I'm a rescue. I am a rescue. I would've came, and I would've picked up her and her babies. There was no reason to kill. And the disease, when you get a staffed vet in there, you'll see this change because the rescues will come in to this shelter and they'll take these dogs away. Gwinnett did it. They said, we have a strange disease. They sent the thing off to Tifton. UGA came back with upper respiratory, a strand of upper respiratory. Gwinnett said, please help us, community. Please come get our dogs. And most of their dogs got out by the public.
Excuse me, Ms. Fleming, your time has expired.
And just for the record, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Bivins, but the budget does contain a vet, full-time vet, right?
Yes, sir, it does.
Thank you. Carl Swanson.
Commissioners, Chairman. Good to see you again. Carl Swanson with the Clayton County Citizens Oversight Committee. Been a while since I've been around. Got some questions for you in regards to the operation of the Clayton County Government. Right now, everybody sees that they have their elected officials sitting up here before them. They understand that as Chairman, as Commissioners, you have certain jobs you have to perform, and all of the stuff that is being done is being done under the guise of the budget and the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I cannot find anywhere in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that refers to the shadow corporations that are being run in the background. Some real, some not, okay? One of them that is real is the Clayton County Government Services Corporation, of which, as I've come to find out, Chairman Turner, you are automatically made the CEO. And nowhere in the finances, do we see any allocations for funds for these?
When do they meet? I might need to be there.
I'm sorry?
When do they meet?
Don't know that. That's, that's why I'm here for the questions, you know?
It's called the Clayton County Service, what?
Clayton County Governmental Finance Corporation, okay? That's merely one. There's, there's more. But yeah, these corporations are being run kind of in the background, and I think the people, in light of government and the sunshine laws, should know everything that's going on, okay? Should know through the finances, through the CAFER, however you do it, they should know that there's these corporations being run. There are many people involved in this. Kristy Barnes is one of the officers involved in this. There are, there are some domestic possible links and international links to these corporations. And I'm not saying any of you are even aware of these, but they're there. They're very real. Clayton County Commissioner's Office, obviously, there's a link to that from this finance corporation. The Clayton C. Counter BD, and several others, including a DACC Public Purpose Corporation, all with links to the Clayton County Government Service Finance Corporation, Service Finance Corporation. I found one very interesting today, and that was the Karen's House of Shoes, who's using 112 Smith Street, Jonesville, Georgia, as their primary address. Personally, I've never seen a shoe store in here, but here it is, okay? Now, I called. Called the number. Number brings me right to Clayton County Commissioner's Office. Hmm. I was handed over to a Cable Brooks. I don't know if you know who Cable Brooks is. I don't know who she is. But she was quick to point out that, oh yeah, back in 2014, we created a bunch of fictitious corporations. All of us were involved in this. So the question begs to be asked.
Hold, hold, hold on.
Was it the House of Shoes that got you?
She works for Community Development. Okay. I hear what you're saying. And some of the, a lot of this, all of it, I'm totally unaware of.
Oh, okay.
So, and I'm sure, unless the Board members are familiar with it, they can speak up and speak on their own, but what I would like to do is for you to provide us that information, allow us time to go follow up and get you some answers.
I would be more than happy to. That's gonna be my open records request on this, okay?
Not a problem.
And Ms. Lawson, your time has expired.
Can you provide me with the phone number that you called?
I will when I get back to the house. What I've got as far as, this shows up in the Yellow Pages, by the way.
House of Shoes, like S-H-O-E-S?
Yeah, it shows up in the online Yellow Pages. And the phone number for that, by the way, is seven-seven-zero-four-seven-three-five-four-two-one.
Okay. Can you get either what you have or email Ms. Barnes?
Now, hold on a second. I've done this before. I've caught some really interesting situations here where we had some strange dealings with the finances that were turned over, that, now not on your watch, by the way, that were turned over to, to Ms. Lawson, that indicated criminal activity that never got prosecuted. One involved a million-plus dollars in that, that, that boondoggle, which was the, the purchase of the Ingalls, the former Ingalls supermarket up there in Lake City. And nothing ever happened.
Well, we don't govern, we can't speak for Ms. Lawson. The only thing I can tell you is, from our end, we wanna check into this, so please provide us with.
I will call you personally, and we will get the information to you. I'd love to, because we'd really like some answers on this.
Yes, sir, I would too. Thank you.
Gentlemen, have a great day.
I guess. Just need to know when the meetings are. Vicki Warren. How we doing, Madam Clerk, on time?
We still have time for... So we don't actually do the ten people for?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes flat.
And we...
Good evening.
Good evening.
We do up to thirty minutes, and if we go over thirty minutes, then everybody else gets added to the top of the roster for the next.
For the next meeting.
Right, and everyone is being maintained to the three, to the three minutes, and it's my understanding that there were not more than ten.
That's correct.
So, we're still good on time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. I'm here to speak on Southern Regional Hospital. I visited Southern Regional by ambulance back in February. When I told them that I think I had pneumonia, when I got to Southern Regional, I was given one pill and a prescription for levofloxacin, which Channel Two reported is a questionable product. Not only did I get just one prescription for my diagnoses, but had not slept for three days. I told them this. After going to my regular hospital of choice, Grady, I was prescribed erythromycin, sevofloxacin, over-the-counter Claritin, Robitussin. And after all that, I was told that, well, I thought I was gonna die, actually, when, when I was sent home. They told me I could go home. How barbaric. Clayton County, come on. Who is going to rescue the citizens from Southern Regional? Grady's the best hospital this side of the Mississippi. The only reason people come down here is prevent Clayton County from moving forward. And the only way we can do this is to appoint a county manager, which Dietrich would be just as good in as any outside search because he has a vision and he is cohesive to what we at Clayton County want and need. And the only reason why our taxes are going up is because we don't have enough businesses here. And the reason why we don't have enough businesses here is because we don't have, what's that position that the man left for, went to Avondale?
Economic Development.
Economic Development. We need him. We need to develop. Yeah, we need that. And we need to start looking at ways of progressing instead of punishing people, you know? We don't need to earn our money by locking people up. We need to earn our money by getting people jobs. We like to play here, we like to eat here, we like to have fun here. And our kids deserve it, and we deserve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Janie Hinton.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm here to talk about Southern Regional. I'm Janie Hinton from Henry County. Southern Regional has a passionate team of nurses and caregivers, and I feel that you need to hear some of the good things we have done for our patients. I've been working at Southern Regional for thirty years in various roles, and my most recent role is that of a nurse leader. I've always been committed to providing high-quality and safe patient care. The work we do doesn't just end at the bedside, and I want to tell you some of the things that we do for our patients. Last week, one of the patients on my unit left her discharged prescriptions at the hospital. I contacted the patient and learned that she is not able to drive and had no way to pick these up. I asked her where she wanted to get her prescriptions filled. Then I drove those prescriptions to her pharmacy so she could get the medications that she needed. On another occasion, I connected to one patient on my clinical floor, who I found crying in a room while I was rounding. In talking with the patient, I learned that she had, she expressed she spent her whole life raising her children as a single mother. She said now they are grown, and she has no friends to help. I told her that I would be her friend. I gave her my cellphone number. It appeared to me that she was without family and in a serious health condition. When the patient was discharged, I asked her what her needed, her assistance needs was when she returned home. I would call and speak to her and check in on her. During the holidays, she was sick, and my family and I took her some food. She became very sick and could not drive herself to the physician appointments, so I enlisted the help of my husband, and we took her for her appointments. I would also take her home from the hospital. I assisted with cleaning her home, assisted with picking up prescriptions. After her last admission to the hospital, I took her home and noticed a decline in her health. Sorry. I asked her to give me her sister's number as I was getting her medications filled and picking up some food for her. I called her sister and discussed the decline, the rapid decline in her care, I mean, in her disease process. It was in with that two weeks' time that her family started coming around and seeing her and spending time. I received a call from her one morning. She was very short of breath. She explained that she was not feeling well. I asked her if we needed to come and pick her up, to take her to the doctor, and she said, no. Thanks to you, my daughter will take me. I was excited to know that they were now seeing her. I instructed her to conserve her breath and for her daughter to call me with the plans from the doctor's visit. She replied, okay, and said, I love you, Janie.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hinton. Your time has expired.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate you for sharing. Melanie Rutherford.
Melanie Rutherford.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have a question I wanna start with. Is there a Commissioner for the, for District Four? Okay. Is it? Okay. Because it is not on the website. It appears that there is no Commissioner, and there's no telephone number. When you dial the number, it, it's a disconnected number.
We'll check into it and correct it, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I would like to speak to the issue of the negative impact of the number of foreclosures in Clayton County and the fact that it is lingering. And I, my question, I have a question. Is there initiative, or has there been a, an initiative to mitigate the impact of those foreclosures? Because it has really impacted the communities and by investors being able to come into the communities and then rent the homes out, bringing down the values of people's homes.
Let me say this, and traditionally, we're not going to go back and forth for Q and A simply because we wanna hear from you, and that would be time-consuming. But yes, answer your question, there are initiatives that we use on the operational side, as well as we partner with other entities throughout the county. But if you were to, if you would like to give me a call, I would sit down with you and talk to you and explain to you and show you what we have been doing.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, let me mention also too, right now, we have the Hope for Homeowners going on in the county. And Saturday, we had one in District One, which was very, very well-attended, where we partnered with the UGA Extension Service, where they're making homeowners aware of resources to help them stay in their homes so we can try to prevent some of the foreclosures. Next, they're gonna be going to District Two and then District Three. So we do have, I think the Board is addressing those issues right now.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So I will make you aware of those locations as well, so you can help spread the word.
All right.
But also, we have.
I did leave you a message.
Mr. Jiki over Hud. Mr. Jiki, Ms. Rutherford, gentleman in the brown suit, he can give you some information about some services that we have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rooks.
You're welcome.
Senator Gail Davenport. Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes.
That concludes public comment. We would now have proclamation. The first is whereby Clayton County honors World War II veteran and knighthood of Reverend Stanley T. Byers. Mr. Byers, Reverend Byers, please come forward.
That's very special.
As well as family and friends, I would ask the Commissioners to rise from their respective seats at the table to join them for the presentation.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County honors the life and legacy of World War II veteran and knight Reverend Stanley T. Byers, Senior. Whereas Reverend Stanley T.
Whereas Reverend Stanley T. Byers Senior was born on April tenth, nineteen twenty-three, in Boston, Massachusetts. In nineteen forty-two, he enlisted in the U.S. Army, proudly serving his country in World War II with the four thousand and eighth Quartermaster Trucking Company, known as the Red Ball Express. This Army regiment operated twenty-four hours a day, delivering supplies from the beaches of Normandy to the front lines of the war, and seventy-five percent of drivers and mechanics were African-Americans. And whereas, during offensive operations, some twenty-eight divisions were already fighting and needed constant resupply. Each division consumed about seven hundred and fifty tons of supplies per day, totaling about twenty-one thousand tons in all. The only way to deliver them was by truck, shortly giving rise to the Red Ball Express. At its peak, the express operated five thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight vehicles in its fleets, and the men knew how to adjust the engine to exceed the factory settings of fifty-five miles per hour. And whereas, in addition to receiving recognition by President Barack Obama by a decree signed by Francois Hollande, the President of France, dated March thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, Mr. Stanley T. Byers Senior has been named Knight in the National Order of the Legion of Honor. On Thursday, June fourth, an official ceremony will be held at the State Capitol, located at two oh six Washington Street, southwest Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three three four, by the French consulate in tribute to his service to their country. And whereas, upon his honorable discharge with the rank of Sergeant, he moved back to his hometown, opening several restaurants in the Roxbury community of Boston. A devout Christian and family man, Mr. Byers is the father of ten children, twenty-five grandchildren, thirty-four great-grandchildren, and three great-great-grandchildren. He is ninety-one years old and enjoys studying the Word of God. "But seek ye first the kingdom of God and His righteousness, and all these things shall be added unto you," is the key to his longevity in life. He also enjoys gardening and watching the Atlanta Hawks play basketball. Now therefore I, Gail B. Hambrick, Vice Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Thursday, June fourth, two thousand and fifteen, as Reverend Stanley T. Byers Senior Day in Clayton County, Georgia. I urge all citizens to recognize and pay tribute to this heroic and fearless veteran who served to protect the freedom of mankind. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the second day of June in the year two thousand and fifteen. Gail B. Hambrick, Vice Chairman.
We will now have a proclamation whereby Clayton County recognizes Kenneth Foster. Will Mr. Foster please come forward, as well as any family and friends?
Well, he's coming forward. You know, we think about the people who drive for Meals on Wheels. This gentleman just, just goes beyond. I, I'm just amazed at what he does. He's not just a driver, he's, he's a friend of the seniors. I mean, he knows them, they know him, they look forward to him, and it's just really something amazing to ride with him to the little fields. And unfortunately, he's going to be leaving us, and I know the seniors are sad.
No, we need you in the picture. Steve, Steve.
First person, so.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County honors Kenneth Foster, recognition of service. Whereas, Kenneth Foster is a native of Atlanta, Georgia, and has worked for Clayton County senior services for the past seven years. And whereas, Kenneth Foster, while working as a Meals on Wheels driver, was adored and loved by Clayton County seniors and would go above and beyond to assist them in any way, including checking mail for seniors, checking on seniors and their families to ensure that they were in good health, and even small tasks such as pouring a Coca-Cola, changing light bulbs, and carrying items for seniors. And whereas, Kenneth Foster was an excellent team player and was always willing to assist in any area of senior services. And whereas, Kenneth Foster takes great pride in fishing and also enjoys discussing, giving advice, and giving guidance about how to fish. And whereas, Kenneth Foster will be truly missed by the senior services staff and the seniors whose lives he's touched. And whereas, Clayton County Board of Commissioners is honored to recognize Kenneth Foster for his tireless years of service to Clayton County. Now therefore I, Sona Singleton Gregory, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby call on all citizens to join me in recognizing the extraordinary efforts and commitment Kenneth Foster has made to the Clayton County community. I congratulate and honor you for your great service. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the second day of June in the year two thousand and fifteen. Sona Singleton Gregory, Commissioner.
The board will now hear a presentation by Lender Summerlin, the Executive Director of Arts Clayton, to provide an Arts Clayton update.
Thank you, Commissioners. What just happened here is truly, we are the greatest county, full of the greatest people doing the greatest things. And Arts Clayton is no exception, as you know, along with many others. This is the, every year, I stand before you at this time to publicly say thank you for the support that you give and to recommit to you our, our resolve that we will always step outside the box, go beyond the boundaries to bring good things to this county, give opportunities to our citizens, and make you proud. I have delivered the annual T-shirt for camp this year. I always say, if I've given you the wrong size, let me know. And this year, we had extra caps left over from last year from our, one of our golf sponsors, Bridgestone, and I've been giving you one of those, so you can use that or pass it on. I also put before you a folder that outlines some accomplishments this year that I really wanted to say publicly could not happen without your support. The first thing you see is a rack card, which outlines what is coming for the remainder of the year before we go into the holiday season. That rack card is now in all of the welcome centers in the state of Georgia, coming across the line. It is also being distributed through Consular Corps and other entities outside of Clayton County. And it's our effort to bring people in to see the exhibits that we are having that actually are very different and very cool to some people as the Booth Western Museum that we just had. The next thing you have is the state newsletter, Arts Newsletter, and you will see that Arts Clayton is featured in the center, a two-page spread. And one of the highlights of being able to, we recognize, is because of our NACO National Award. And I want to thank Chairman Turner and Chairman, I mean, Commissioner Hambrick and Commissioner Gregory for being in New Orleans at the time to accept it. That was a great honor for us and our county, and I thank you for that. But that has led to a lot of national recognition and also was what led to the story. And so I brought you a copy of that, and that is hot off the press of about two weeks ago, or three weeks ago. I've outlined a few other things that I am not going to read off, but I wanted you to have it. And I wanted you to see what we were doing in the, in the arena of continuing arts education with e-readers. We now are servicing thirty-one after-school programs in our community, and our residency for artists is growing, so therefore, the partnership with the Clayton County Public Schools is growing. And we are just excelling in that area with seven certified art instructors that are going out into all of our after-school programs. The traveling exhibits is one of our, one of the things we're most proud of as well this year. We were challenged to look clearly beyond boundaries and beyond those boundaries. And we just finished the Western Museum. We have partnered with the Taiwanese Consular Corps. We will have a, the next exhibit, which opens this Friday for the next month, will be a, a focus, excuse me. That, the Taiwanese is coming in July. We're skipping, next month is our feature on local artists and the artist's family. The Taiwanese is coming. And then after that, we are putting together a phenomenal program for August and September with a focus on the Gullah Geechee heritage. And you've got a magazine that we have received from our partnership with the Penn Institute that we have given you, that we will be distributing. So we look forward to all of that. We wanted you to, I wanted to personally say to each of you collectively what your support has meant and what we are doing with that. I will close that we challenged ourselves this year to reach beyond the Clayton County school system in and of itself to partner with colleges and universities. We formed a new partnership with Clayton State University. We renewed that partnership. We part, we partnered with Atlanta Technical College two years ago, and that has been phenomenal, where they are featured every October in our photography show. And, and this year, we added Georgia Southwestern University. They are the only university in the state that teaches blown glass and pottery as a core curriculum course. So with that said, all I can say is thank you. I'm proud to live in Clayton County. I'm proud to have you all serve us. And thank you for the many things you do and all the decisions you have to make. It is indeed, I honor you for that as hard as they are sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Summerlin. Appreciate the work that you and your staff is doing as well.
The board will now consider the request of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
Please take them together.
Good evening. Central Services has four requests. The first is a recommendation for a social support for the lease of two scanners for the Clerk of Superior Court, a UScan universal digital microfilm scanner and Fujitsu six-six-seventy scanner. The recommendation is to approve the lease agreement in the amount of six hundred and seventy dollars and nineteen cents per month for thirty-six months from Milner Document Products located at fifty-one twenty-five Peachtree Industrial Boulevard in Norcourse, Georgia. Funding is available through the Clerk of Superior Court's capital lease fund. The second is a recommendation for renewal of the county's employment practices liability coverage. The recommendation is to renew coverage with Indian Harbor Insurance Company, XL Group, for the period of July first through two thousand and fifteen through July first, two thousand and sixteen, with a premium of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-four cents. This policy provides insurance coverage for claims against the county alleging discrimination, sexual harassment, or wrongful termination of employees, former employees, or applicants of the county. Funding is available through the county's general fund fiscal year ending two thousand and fifteen. The next is recommendation of renewal of the county's excess workers' compensation and employer liabilities coverage. The recommendation is to renew with Midwest Employers Casualty Company for the period of July first, two thousand and fifteen through July first, two thousand and sixteen, with a premium of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This policy provides insurance coverage for the county in the event of a workers' compensation claim that exceeds six hundred thousand dollars for fire and law enforcement employees and five hundred thousand dollars for all other employees. Funding is available, available through the county's workers' compensation fund fiscal year ending two thousand and fifteen. The final is a recommendation for utilizing a statewide contract to purchase a two thousand and sixteen Ford three, Ford F-350 regular cab V-eight long bed four-by-two truck for the fire department. Utilizing statewide contract nine-nine-nine-nine-nine-nine SPD ES four-zero-one-nine-nine-three-seven-three-dash-zero-zero-two. The recommendation is to approve this purchase for the truck in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and forty-two cents from Allen Visual Fort Lincoln located in Marlboro, Georgia. Funding is available through the county's vehicle replacement fund. The department's recommendations, the vendor quotes, and the supporting documents are attached for your review and information. The request for, is for you to approve the recommendations, authorize the chairman or his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion?
Some is.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions on any of the items? Here and done, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
The board will consider the request of Ramona Bivens, Chief Financial Officer.
Please take them together, ma'am.
Excuse me, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have three items for your consideration this evening. Budget Amendment two dash thirty-seven for professional services to increase the budget in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to cover the cost of consulting fees for a hospital feasibility study. Budget Amendment two dash thirty-eight for other general government is to amend the budget in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to replace one vehicle for the tax assessor's department where repair costs exceed the value of the vehicle. The last item is Budget Amendment two dash thirty-nine for other general government to amend the budget in the amount of seventy-one thousand dollars to replace two fire department vehicles where repair costs exceed the value of the vehicles.
Just for clarification, item one that you read for the increase to the budget for consultant fees, was that the one, that's not the one that we said we would hold till after executive session?
We didn't say we would hold it. You said that, she said that, Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Bivens advised us that money could sit there. We couldn't pass it on.
Okay, so we're good just moving on.
There was no contract anyway, is that right?
Right.
That's what, that's what they just said.
It's the engagement letter that you will discuss after executive session.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, is there a motion?
Some is.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions on any of the items? Here and done, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The board will now consider the request of Renee Bright, Human Resources Director.
I think you have two items tonight.
Take them together.
The both requests are from the court administrator. The first is to reclassify the court's IT coordinator position from a grade twenty-nine to a grade thirty-one, and to amend the class specification to increase the minimum experience requirements from one year to three years. The total annual increase of salary and benefits for this request is seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars, and it will be funded from the state court technology fund and probation supervision fees, so this would result in no impact to the general fund. The next request is to reclassify the Office of Probation Services Principal Secretary position, which is a grade thirteen, to an administrative assistant position at a grade sixteen. The total annual increase in salary and benefits is five thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars, and will be funded from the probation supervision fees. So again, there would be no impact to the general fund.
All right, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Oh, seconded, properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions?
I do.
Ms. Bright, the information that we have here, particularly on the first, IT coordinator, it says the fiscal, the fiscal impact would be six thousand, two eighty-seven, twenty-seven. Did the number change?
I believe that did not include the benefits.
Okay, and same for the secretary. It did include, it lists here that the impact would be four thousand, three sixty-eight oh two.
That's correct. That was just based on salary. It did not include the benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
The board will now consider the request of Kristy Barnes, Chief Staff Attorney.
All right, take them together unless a board member wants to separate, aye. Hearing none, take them together.
Yes, sir. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one thirty-eight is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept grant funds on behalf of the Clayton County Adult Felony Drug Court Program from the State of Georgia Accountability Court Funding Committee to support program needs, to authorize the chairman to execute all necessary documents, and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may relate to the grant, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. These are grant funds in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars with a ten percent local match required. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one thirty-nine is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept grant funds on behalf of the Clayton County DUI Drug Court Program from the State of Georgia Accountability Court Funding Committee to support program needs, to authorize the chairman to execute all necessary documents, and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required as they relate to the grant, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. These are grant funds in the amount of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars with a ten percent local match required. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one forty is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept abandoned property pursuant to OCGA seventeen dash five dash fifty-four A-1 and Superior Court Order twenty fifteen CV zero-one-seven-one-dash-nine for official use by the police department, to authorize the chairman or the chief of police as his designee to accept the property on behalf of Clayton County, and to execute any documents necessary and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And the thirteen items that the county would be accepting are attached to your documentation. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one forty-one is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an agreement with Immigration and Customs Enforcement, Homeland Security Investigations Agency for reimbursement of county overtime and other expenses for participation in the Joint Operations Task Force, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one forty-two is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a partnership agreement with Lake Spivey Community Incorporated and Southern Regional Medical Center Foundation to host the seventh annual Clayton County Parks and Recreation Lake Spivey Road Race at Clayton County International Park, and to host the first annual Lake Spivey Community Incorporated Golf Tournament at the Lake Spivey Golf Club, and to collaborate with county agencies and representatives in support of the Kids Outdoors Initiative, the Georgia Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights, and the Southern Regional Medical Neo, Neonatal Intensive Care Unit, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. The golf tournament will be held October ninth, two thousand fifteen, and the road race will be held October tenth, two thousand fifteen. Ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one forty-three is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia, as amended specifically, Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part Two, Chapter fourteen, Animals, Article seven, Responsible Dog Ownership Law, by repealing and deleting the existing subsection E of Section fourteen dash one thirty-seven point one, Animal Control Board, and substituting in lieu thereof a new subsection E of Section fourteen dash one thirty-seven point one, Animal Control Board, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this res, of this ordinance and for other purposes. And this will change the requirements that the Animal Control Board will meet not fewer than once per quarter. Right now, the language is that they will not meet fewer than once per month. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one forty-four is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept a donation of television station equipment from Douglas County, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one forty-five is Clayton County's resolution creating the Airport South Community Improvement District. And Ms. Nicole Hall has informed the board that one of the property owners withdrew their consent to the creation of the CID, which resulted in a change to the property map, the CID map, and the list of parcels. The tax commissioner has now certified this amended map and the list of property owners. This will not change the June twenty-ninth meeting of the district, for the, the June twenty-ninth meeting for the CID to elect their district board members. That will be June twenty-ninth at Omni Tech Institute, Omni Tech Institute, eighteen hundred Phoenix Boulevard, Classroom Four in College Park.
Is it still four?
Class four, it is still Classroom Four. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one forty-six is a resolution directing the Director of the Human Resources Department to advertise the position of Clayton County Chief Operating Officer and to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution and to provide an effective date of this resolution. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one forty-seven is a resolution to approve a property use request to allow Club Excel Incorporated, Doing Business, as Club Excel Youth Life Center, to use vacant county-owned property located at two hundred Valley Hill Road for children's recreational outdoor activities, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions on any of the items?
I do. Okay, the last one, two, um, fifteen, one forty-seven. What is that property? I mean, is it a house? And I'm sure y'all vetted it.
It's a building. It used to be the old Eye Optical Place. It's Club Excel now. And we own the lot that's next to it. It's a grassed lot, empty lot. And they just want to utilize that for the kids to play.
Just a lot?
It's just a vacant lot, so they can go out there and play kickball or whatever else.
So they, they, we won't be responsible if they get hurt?
There's a, there's a waiver. They're gonna say, sign a waiver of being on our property.
That's correct.
I have a question about the CID. Which, which particular business declined to participate?
Prologis.
It's prologis.
Follow up to that?
Nope.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Chairman, I need an executive session for litigation and personnel.
Okay, thank you.
Items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four are appointments to the library board. The first is to fill the expiring term of Brenda Rayburn. The term is for three years, expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. This is a full board appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, after speaking with Ms. Rayburn, she's very enthusiastic about being reappointed and continuing to serve. I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint her.
I'll second it.
Properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
The next is an appointment to fill the expiring term of Arlene, I'm sorry, of Sherry Hamilton. This is also a three-year term, expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. This is a full board appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I also spoke with Ms. Hamilton, and, and she shared her enthusiasm for a reappointment. And if you'd entertain it, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Ms. Sherry Hamilton.
I'll second it.
Properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, it's unanimous.
And the final appointment to the library board to fill the expiring term of Arlene Webster. This is also a three-year term, expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
All right, let's hold.
Hearing none. Item number twenty-five is an appointment to the Code Enforcement Board to fill the unexpired term of Eddie White and a new full term. Mr. White has resigned his position. The term is for three years, expiring on July sixteen, two thousand eighteen. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations? Hearing none. Item number twenty-six is an appointment to the Family and Children's Services Board to fill the unexpired term of Eddie White, who has resigned. The term is for five years, expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to recommend to the board, Ms. Keisha Wright Hill.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Item number twenty-seven, this is an appointment to the Board of Health to fill a vacant seat that has been slated for an actively practicing physician in Clayton County. The term is for six years, expiring on December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
I got a question in reference to this one. The way it reads is, this person has to be an, a practicing physician?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. He has to be actively, he or she has to be actively practicing physician in Clayton County.
Gotcha. All right, we'll hold that one as well.
I want to go back to the Code Enforcement Board. Just wanted to bring something to your attention. In the drop box, I was looking at the list of citizens that serve on that board. The alternate, Mr. Rice has, is no longer in the county. So we, I think the board requires, the Code Enforcement Board requires an alternate be named, because it's only a board of three, so.
I thought he lived in Forest Park.
He, he moved a long time ago. Remember, he was on the Redevelopment Authority? And he moved, and when he, he resigned from the Development Authority and moved.
You may be right. I thought he had just changed employers, though.
No, he moved from the county.
My bad.
So we need two people.
Need an alternate, as well as to fill Mr. White's position.
And we will bring that for the next board meeting. Item number twenty-eight is to accept a streetlight petition addition to existing streetlight district Legacy Ridge subdivision on Double Bridge Road in District One.
So move. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
If there is no further business to discuss, we did receive a request to go into executive session to discuss litigation and personnel.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you, and have a good evening, everyone.